Is there a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Dr. Renator, thank you. Mr. Mekka second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Good evening, everyone. I call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except for Mr. Warrenstein. He was unable to make it this month because of our date change. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Executive Order 2002.1, please be advised that members of the public will not be permitted to attend the board meeting in person. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and will be transcribed at a later date for Executive Order 2002.1. This meeting is being conducted as a webinar. The public has had the option to register for this meeting. At this time, if everyone would please unmute their microphones. And Mr. Skanzuza, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. My new second. Mrs. Beeger, thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. So this is a very unique evening. We are going to be getting our annual budget vote and bond proposition and school board election results first. So Mrs. Carey, at this moment, we will send it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lotherbarrow. Today, downtown at Erie County Board of Elections, they scanned our ballots. There were 12,216 that went through the scanner. The, I will announce propositions and then the election for school board candidate. Proposition 1, the 2021 budget. Vote count by the machine was 8,723. Hand tally were six. Total votes 8,729. No votes, 3,016. Hand tally four. Total 3,020. Proposition 1 passed by 74%. Moving on to Proposition number 2. Bond proposition, school security project. Machine tally, yes votes, 7,662. Hand tally seven. Total votes 7,669. No votes, 3,161. Two hand tally. Total votes 3,163. Bond proposition number 2 passed by 71%. Moving on to Proposition number 3. Vote for any three board members. I will go in order, 1A through 8A, and read off first and last name. Candidate 1A, Michael Biscaglia. Vote count on the machine was 5,626. Hand tally was four. Total votes 5,630. 2A, Matthew Klebo. Machine count 2,054. Hand tally two. Total votes 2,056. Candidate 3A, Crystal Kazmeric Bogner. Machine count 5,611. Hand tally six. Total votes 5,617. Candidate 4A, Susan McClary. Machine count 6,679. Hand tally eight. Total votes 6,687. Candidate 5A, Philip Meyer. Machine count 3,080. Hand tally three. Total vote count 3,083. Ronald Schubert. Machine count 2,487. Hand tally three. 7A, Swarup Singh. Machine count 3,643. Hand tally one. Total vote count 3,644. Jason Sensabaugh. Machine count 1,949. Hand tally one. Total vote count 1,950. So the candidates with the three highest vote counts are 1A, Michael Biscaglia. 3A, Crystal Kazmeric Bogner. And 4A, Susan McClary. And thank you for posting that. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carey, for that information. And I see the results were displayed shortly up on the screen. So they'll be available on the video when you go to pull it up.
I will also put them in. I'll upload that to Board Docs right now. So it's in that for reference for the vote and adoption when you go back to Reference 3C.
Thank you, Mrs. Carey. I'd like to make a motion to have a short recess just out of respect for all of us who have been holding our breath for the results of this important vote. So motion for recess, please. May I have a second? Mrs. Van Syce, thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? One abstention, thank you. Motion carries.
I was opposed to recess. I don't need a recess, but thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Motion does carry and will take about a five to 10 minute recess. Please just turn off your video and mic. And when you're ready, just come back with your video on. As soon as I see everyone back at the screen, I'll go ahead and get started. Mrs. Carey, will you just give me a thumbs up when I can go ahead and start? Okay, the recess has ended. I call the meeting back to order. We are on item four. Are there any board acknowledgements? Mrs. Van Syce?
Yes, I actually do have just a couple. First, I would like to recognize the entire district. Dr. Martschaff, the leadership team, the teachers, and all the various staff members, along with our students, for earning the number one ranking in Business First. Congratulations and well deserved. Secondly, I would also like to extend my sincerest appreciation to Mrs. Lynn Carey, our district clerk, for your endless time, your problem-solving skills, and your proactive approach to this year's unusual voting process. It was undoubtedly successful due to your effort, so thank you very much. And lastly, I feel it necessary to acknowledge and publicly thank our board president, Mrs. Lotherbarrow. As we all know, these past few months have not been easy and have brought along many struggles and much uncertainty, especially for a school district and their school board. I am grateful for the immense time and the leadership you have provided on behalf of our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Syce. I'm just going to go across in order here on my screen as they appear. So next is Mr. Lemay.
Thank you. I've got a lengthy list here, so I'll try and do it quickly here. I wanted to start with congratulating Theodore Pullen from Mill Middle School for taking third place in the National Our World in Our Hands Contest that was sponsored by C-SPAN. Wanted to move on and because it's the end of the year and we've been through such challenging times, I wanted to take and stop and take a quick moment to thank everybody. I want to start with the staff. People like the stodious staff for keeping and cleaning the buildings and the grounds in good shape during this COVID-19. Especially the IT staff for keeping us all online and helping with the remote access and the remote learning. I want to thank the teachers for coming up with new educational plans, finding new ways to teach, exploring new ways to connect with students. And best of all, trying to stay positive and upbeat with our students and with everybody else. The administrators and the leadership team, taking on the challenge to help the teachers and the students, working under these extreme and strange conditions that we've been in. And being dumped on from angry parents, stressed teachers, depressed students, and more. My fellow board members, working and trying to always be positive and forward-looking during a time of uncertainty and being patient and caring and understanding with one another. With parents, and parents most of all. We can laugh about the memes about paying teachers 10 times more or parents expelling their students from school. But it was their devotion. It was the lack of direction from the state which translated down to local schools and onto the parents and the students. But it was the technology limits, the slow internets, the lack of internet at all maybe, or problems with equipment, or no equipment at all. No central location for workflows, no prescribed formulas for making the education work remotely. But best of all, the parents for keeping their children motivated and on course for learning. The students themselves, the most difficult part of all of this was that students were trying to accommodate for all issues previously mentioned. But them trying to be motivated, staying motivated, being patient, being optimistic, and best of all, getting the work done. And most of all, our seniors, our graduating seniors. This was not the way it was intended to be. They went along. They were going with it, being positive, cheerful, understanding, and the world around them changing as it affected them the most. Their moment in the spotlight was taken from them this year, but they all found ways to still shine. Lastly, everyone else for making Williamsville the number one school district again. We already knew it in our hearts that we've been number one, always have been. We know that it's not because of the test scores, even though that's what made us number one for Business First. But we've always been the number one school in our schools and the, excuse me, in the district because of our teachers, our administrators, our staff, and our parents. It's how we all work hard at improving and we never stop looking for ways to improve. Let's hope 2021 is not in any way a repeat of 2020. With one exception, I don't mind us being number one rated, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Anyone else for board acknowledgements? Dr. McClary?
Yes, thank you. I would first like to echo all of the comments of the others, especially what Ms. Van Syce said about all of the phenomenal work that Mrs. Carey had to go through in this unusual time. And it's not an acknowledgement, but I will have to say thank you for all of the people who voted for me. And I look forward to continuing on with us as a great district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McClary. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Ms. Lotherbarrow. So first off, just want to thank Ms. Lynn Carey, our district clerk, for carrying off an amazing job. This year's election was unprecedented. She had to process over 12,000 votes. Not something that was in the job description, but she did an amazing job. So hats off to you, Lynn Carey. Secondly, I want to congratulate, because it's very relevant tonight, given that we just have a result. I want to congratulate Michael Biscaglia, Susan McClary, and Ms. Kazmeric Bogner on their wins tonight. And then for the rest of the candidates, Mr. Klebo, Ronald Schubert, Swarup Singh, and Jason Sensabaugh. Thank you for being a voice in this election and offering up your views and opinions on what should be the direction of the district. And I'm glad that you participated in this year's election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Mekka?
Thanks. Since this is the last board meeting of the 2019-2020 school year, one that will go down in the record book, no doubt. Because of the COVID-19 challenges, I reached out to the Williamsville United Facebook group and asked that group of people who they thought should be recognized. And I'm carrying their recognitions forward, then with one recognition myself after that. So that group thought we should recognize the building administrators, retiring teachers. And I'll point out that Janice Curry has 40 years of teaching experience in the Williamsville Schools as a music teacher. She's retiring today on her retirees list. Nurses, teachers, janitorial staff, counselors, secretarial, students, parents. And someone mentioned Lynn Carey, and I'll mention that she had to count 12,216 votes or deal with those ballots. So, and I like what Sean did, though. Sean, so my own personal recognition will mirror Sean's. I'm going to steal from him. I'd like to recognize our fellow board and our superintendent for all the hard work that we've done as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mekka. I would like to recognize the students and personnel of Mill Middle School Social Justice Club. They recently created a video to celebrate Pride and Pride Week and Pride Month. And they posted it to social media on Twitter and it had a beautiful and timely message about love and acceptance for all. So kudos to all of our kiddos over at Mill Middle School. Item five. Dr. McClary, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Okay. Welcome to all who have registered to observe this regular Zoom board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression. A time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. At two and a half minutes, I will kind of rudely interrupt and notify you that there are 30 seconds remaining. And at three minutes, I will interrupt again and thank you for your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your cooperation. Those who have pre-registered for public expression, I will call on you. And if there is time allowed, I will call on those interested in addressing others who are interested in addressing the board. At this time, if you have not already indicated that you would like to speak, but would like to be put on the list if we have time, if you could please on your screen, show your raised hand. And then I will know which individuals will be added to our list if we have time. But in terms of our list of speakers, the first person will be Karen Taylor. Is Karen here? I don't see Karen. So what we will do is I'm going to move on to the second person who's on the list. And if you're not sure, or if you know that you would like to speak, whether you have registered or not, please go ahead and hit that button to raise your hand. It will help us move along. Thank you. But the second person that is on the list at the moment is Shashidra Ramchadro. Eri, Eddie, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm here, ma'am. Can please let me know when my three minutes is going to start?
Okay, you, which is fine with us. You are only on the voice side.
Yes, ma'am. I'm fine with that.
All right. Then I will get my stopwatch, my handy stopwatch here. And you may begin your three minutes now.
I had come before the board in September with the same thing about why there is no diversity on your school board. Most is, you want to pay attention, you can, the board, the superintendent cannot claim that they don't have any idea about lack of diversity. I can say that all of you guys are very educated, intelligent, and very smart people. And when I got an email from the school board president saying that, thanks for getting it our attention, I was surprised that this was, this was not even discussed among you guys in the past. And if the question comes up that why should there be reeun elected, non-voting board members, I can explain that again to you guys. And things are changing. Either you can have somebody who can help you in the long run by having non-voting members from the immigrants, from the non-voting community in the school district. Maybe you can involve them. And it's not, it's not a surprise. You guys can look out around you and see nobody there. And if this keeps on going right, there might be somebody who's going to fight for it. Either you can control the narrative, you can control the, just like, I'll give you a small example if it makes any sense. Whenever there is Whenever there is a bit of dirt in the, dried leaves and a small spark, that night is big fire. Either you can control that fire by lighting the fire itself and bringing topic to discussion, solution to the problem, or the situation can go, I don't know how to say that. It can go uncontrolled. And I don't think you want people to be fighting for something. It's better to accept the fact that the demographics have changed in the school district and get people involved in the board. People are not asking you to elect voting members, just members who can sit there and discuss the problems and give their input from a different perspective. When you say people of color, right, they don't mean you have to include the immigrants, people who have come from a different backgrounds. Okay, my thing by two minutes, 30 seconds is done, but I'm going to tell you this. My perspective on things will be different from my daughter's. She's born here, but I grew up in another country. So the next board election is not going to be a small affair. Either you guys can let the people of color be sitting on the board, or tomorrow you can never say that you, this was never brought to your attention. Imagine if people are camping outside your offices. Imagine if the news reporters are there outside your offices asking you a question. Why isn't a single person of color on your board? It would be a very difficult answer to answer.
Like, excuse me, sir, your three minutes are up, but you can conclude your current statement.
The only thing I want to say is you've got two options. Either the board can ignore this problem before it becomes into a full-blown issue, or you guys can take the steering wheel in your hands and find a solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Our next speaker is Stacy Bernard. Stacy? Then, and we can certainly come back if these individuals do end up checking in. But the next person scheduled is Jing Zhang. Thank you. At this point, and if others on the board see it from their screen, I do not see anyone else who has raised a hand to speak, nor the two individuals that, whose name I already called.
That's correct, Dr. McClary. I don't see any other hands raised either.
Then this would close public expression at this time.
Thank you, Dr. McClary. Item six is our consent agenda approval. May I have a motion, please, to approve consent agenda items? Seven, personnel, eight, business, and nine, special needs and student activities as presented. Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mrs. Beeger, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. At this time, I would like to welcome the following newly appointed assistant principals to our district. Julie Arnold, North High School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director. Kristi Jardina, Maple East Elementary Assistant Principal. Heather Newton, Heim Elementary Assistant Principal. Patrick Quast, Transit Middle Assistant Principal. And a special welcome back to Hillary Weir, Mill Middle School Assistant Principal. I also would like to welcome Robert Conicchio, our newly appointed principal at North High School. If we were together in person, we would usually invite you to come to the podium and say a few words, introduce yourself physically. Some of you may or may not be joining us on our webinar tonight. But please know that we're very excited to welcome you to our district and to meet you in person, hopefully soon. Dr. Martslove, did you wish to add anything there?
Well, we're looking forward to coming to meet all of you once we open back up and can have guests at our board meeting. And we look forward to the leadership that they're going to provide in our school district. It's been a lot of hard work. I want to thank Dr. McKenna for all his hard work and organization, along with the rest of the leadership team, administrators, teachers and staff members who have taken part in the committees to select the new administrators. So we're very pleased and we're really looking forward to them getting started.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Janice Curry, Casey Middle School Music Teacher for 40 years of service. Wendy Deach, Heim Middle Teacher Aid, 40 years of service. Susan Lamonto, Maple West Elementary Teacher Aid, 17 years of service. Barbara Velakos, District Wide Occupational Therapy Assistant, 24 years of service. And Dawn Wertz, Forest Elementary Speech and Hearing Teacher, 33 years of service. Please join me in a round of applause. Item 10. Is there a motion to approve the May 26, 2020 regular board meeting minutes? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Mrs. Van Syce, second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Item 11. Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendations as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Mr. Mecca, second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lemay?
Thank you. I just want to advise that per the advice of the district's legal counsel, I will be voting on this. However, I do want to put on the record that my daughter, Jessica Parker, who is a social worker at Maple West, is one of the recommendations on the tenure appointment list this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. And that is correct. We did check with our district attorney, our board attorney, rather. And that is completely the appropriate thing to do. I just want to say for discussion that achieving and being awarded tenure is a milestone event for teachers and educators. I wish to recognize the individuals that are being considered for tenure tonight for their hard work and commitment to our students. With great trust comes great responsibility. Please love and accept our students and do your best to help them learn and grow cognitively, physically, emotionally and socially. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Again, if we were together in person, we would probably be breaking at this point to enjoy some cake and to meet you all personally and shake your hands. I'm not sure when we'll actually ever be allowed to shake hands again, but hopefully it's sometime soon. So congratulations to all, and please go out and get yourself a slice of cake. Item 12 is our president's report, 12A. The annual meeting for the budget vote, school security improvement project and election of school board members has concluded. Mrs. Carey announced those results at the beginning of our meeting. Is there a motion to accept the results of the annual district vote held by absentee ballot on June 16, 2020, as presented in Agenda Item 3C? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. I would like to thank all eight candidates for being willing to run for a seat on our school board. Serving on a school board is a highly effective way to give input and make decisions that promote continuous school improvement. Thank you to all of our candidates and congratulations to our winners. I look forward to serving with you in the future. 12B. The evaluation of the superintendent is one of the most important duties of the school board. The Williamsville Board of Education takes this responsibility seriously as our superintendent is the chief officer for our district. For the, for the 2019-2020 school year, the Williamsville Board of Education used the program SUPEREVAL to formally evaluate Superintendent Scott G. Martslove. The evaluation consists of five standards with 25 indicators and three annual goals. Superintendent Martslove had the opportunity to complete a self-evaluation and submit evidence of his work for each standard and indicator. As defined by his contract, the results of this evaluation process were shared with Superintendent Martslove during executive session on May 26 and again tonight. Thank you. Item C is the review of our board goals. At this time, we're going to be pulling up a PowerPoint presentation to briefly review our board goals. Thank you for setting that up for us. So here you see all of our lovely faces. The board goals are as followed. We have our goal on board, district and community engagement. And the evidence that you can see listed is that we have a liaison, we have a liaison assignments that we keep track of throughout the year. So if you would like to see progress of our liaison assignments, you can go to that agenda item that's listed. I do my best to respond to speakers and those who write the board. Our district clerk collaborates with me to ensure that those responses are sent out. The copies of all email threads are shared with nine, all nine board members, superintendent, district clerk and administrative assistant. Our fall community forum was held at North High School on November 2. Our spring community forum unfortunately was canceled due to COVID. If you would like to take a look at our school visits, we have a chart that's in the April 21 board docs. It's Agenda Item 10G. A note for the future, since we were unable to finish all of our visits, we have asked that when they are rescheduled, that priority be given to the schools that we did not get to visit yet. And in terms of meeting with union leaders, Dr. Martslove, myself, Mrs. Van Syes, Dr. McClary and Mr. Meyer met with the WTTA Executive Board back in November. Are there any board members that wish to comment on the first goal? Can we go back one page to that goal that we were just on? Thank you. Any board feedback regarding this, this goal? And if so, just shout it out because I can't see all your faces right now. Okay, I don't hear anything. We can go on to the next one. Our next goal is around student wellness. So for the sake of time, I won't read all of it to you because it always irritated me as a teacher when people read PowerPoints to me. So I'll just leave it there for you. But we have recorded our evidence for our student wellness goal. Any board members wish to comment or add anything additional for our student wellness goal? Our goal was to support the physical, mental and emotional needs of students by providing necessary appropriate resources for wellness programs and initiatives. So the evidence is the work of the board from this year. Thank you. You may go to the next slide. Student achievement goal. Our goal was to provide an optimal environment for learning, creativity and engagement by supporting the fundamental educational needs for all students. If you look down halfway to evidence, this is some of the work of our board this year. Does any board member wish to make a comment or add anything? Thank you. Next slide, please. Board efficacy was also a goal of ours this year to identify and implement best practices to better serve the community with responsiveness, efficiency and effectiveness. We did hold a retreat back in January. We also did a mid-year review. And an end of year review of our goals is happening right now, but we will also be conducting self-evaluation of our board. All right, next slide. Thank you. And our final goal was on budget development and fiscal oversight. To oversee a fiscally responsible budget that upholds the mission and values of our school community and to oversee the capital projects to enhance district facilities and increase New York State aid to the Williamsville District. And there you can see some of the recorded evidence from our work this year. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, I don't believe I see any hands up. Thank you. I just want to add that SUPEREVAL is now open to complete a board self-evaluation to begin our new cycle. I opened that up yesterday. I don't know if it prompts you with an email or not from the system. Okay. But I just want to let you know that that is open. It will be open until July 1st for all current board members to complete their independent or self-board evaluation of our, of our board governance this year. Are there any questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Going forward, I would like to propose that we think about scheduling a work session between our reorg meeting and our August board meeting. And the purpose of this would be to develop our board goals for next year and revise our work of the board agreements. So that work of the board agreement is something that we usually approve at our reorg meeting. Sometimes it's referred to as a code of conduct for board members. It combines some of NISBA recommendations and a little bit of our own work. But it's been pretty much the same for a very long time. And at our retreat in January, one of the recommendations from our retreat facilitator was to consider meeting again in a work session to revise that document so that we really have some, some norming of what we want our operating procedures to be. I think that when we, there's a lot of evidence out there that when organizations have discussions about norming their, their operating procedures, you're just able to work a lot more efficiently and effectively. And that is ultimately what we want to be able to do in service to our students and our families. So, um, let's see what else I have in my notes. The other thing is that we are going to be having some new board members joining us. And because of COVID, board members are usually offered an opportunity to attend a new board member training or a board governance training through ECASB. And I do believe that they are working on rescheduling that. I think I saw an email come out today about that. However, I'm not sure what that looks like. And so I, I think it's just another opportunity to bring our new board together sometime after July 1st, before our August board meeting. And to just talk about what our procedures are going to be, what our, what our norms are going to be. What do we do when we get an email? What do we do when a community member comes to us for help? Just to have some clarity around that so we can all be on the same page. So at this time, I just want to open it up to your feedback on that. This is not a motion by any means. It's just to get your feedback if you are interested in that or think it's a good idea or not. If you do think it's a good idea, then we can work on scheduling that through email so that at the July reorg meeting, it can become part of our calendar that we approve for our board meetings. Any feedback on that? Mrs. Van Syes, thank you.
I think that is a fabulous idea. I know Ms. Board President, Vice President, Mrs. Lederbarra, I spoke about that. She shared her idea. I absolutely support it. I think it's a great piece that our new board members would help to transition them into a smoother process of what a school board actually entails, especially in Williamsville. As well as gives all of us that will be continuing on a refresher and really just to have that open conversation right before the school year starts so that we can make sure that we as a board are unified and are ready to start the year. so that we can make sure that we as a board are unified and are ready to start the year, just like we expect from Dr. Martzloff and everyone in our district. So great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Seis. Is there any other feedback on that? Is there anyone opposed to that and saying some thumbs up? Okay. So what I'll do then, obviously, we'll just hold off until our reorg. But, um, well, actually, no, because we want to try and get it on the calendar to approve. So I'm sure Mrs. Carey will be sending us the email addresses for our newly elected members. And, and even before there's sworn in, we can have some correspondence together so we can sort try and pin down a date for that. But we'll just be looking at your calendars so that we can see when we're available between our July reorg meeting and our August board meeting. Thank you for that, everyone. Our next item is high school graduations. So obviously, high school graduations are going to look a little bit different this year. I'm happy to see that we are going to be having a version that is live because it's a very monumental event for our seniors, our graduates, and our families. But typically, the board is invited to attend the graduation. This year, obviously, with the, the requirement to keep the numbers to a specific limit. We're not going to add to that by clogging up the stage. So I will say that our board, although we, I'm sure would all like the opportunity to be able to be there in person, that's just simply not going to be possible this year. So we're working with our district's communications department, and we do have some speakers that are going to record some messages to our seniors. So, and please correct me if I'm wrong at the end of this, but for East High School, Dr. Venater is going to be our speaker. See a head nodding. For North High School, Mrs. Van Seis will be speaking. And I will say that Dr. McClary and Mrs. Van Seis will both be able to attend because they have either a child or a grandchild that is graduating that year this year. So they will be there to present the graduates with their diploma. And for South High School, I have agreed to do this, um, the, the note to graduates for South. So our date for all of our graduations is June twenty-seventh. And Dr. Martzloff, could you, would you like to just give a quick update to the community on just the graduation piece? And then I'll move on to our next item.
Yes, we waited a long time to finalize this and the reason being we were hoping to see some more opportunities to make it as close to typical graduation ceremony as possible. When the last information came out from the governor's office, about up to a hundred and fifty people, that's when we went ahead and planned it this way so that we can have as many people as possible so that the graduating seniors could be together. And they could have family members there to share their day of joy. And so we're really looking forward to the twenty-seventh to making that happen at all three of our schools. We are videotaping graduations, so each graduate will get a copy of the video with not only the speeches, but themselves graduating and getting their diplomas. And we're really looking forward to an outstanding event.
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. Okay, our next item is our review of our board meeting calendar. So that calendar is attached. It will be up for approval at our July first organizational meeting. The only amendment might be if we're able to come to a decision about adding that work session that I spoke about a few minutes ago. All right, item F is our Erie County Association of School Boards. ECASB is exploring options for holding training.
Mrs. Luthervera, I'm sorry to jump in. The new button took me a while to jump on.
Oh, no problem.
Couple of questions about the, the calendar and the changes that were made here. I was curious as to why we were proposing moving from the traditional first of July reorg meeting date to the first Tuesday. And then I was also curious as to why we weren't going to continue going forward with the changes that we had cleared with council last year with conducting the meeting as we do normally.
I'm trying to pull it up and forgive me, I'm working off of two screens. I think I have it that our reorg meeting is July first.
This year, it's July first. Next year, the proposed calendar, it's July sixth, which is the first Tuesday in July.
Oh, so you're talking about July of two thousand twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay, I see. So tell, tell me what your preference is, Mr. Lemay.
I, I'm just asking what's, what's the change? It's always been the first day in July. So in this case, July first would be the normal acceptable. Not saying that, that we have to, just curious as to why we were changing that and then why we're also looking to change the format back to the way we were doing it previously.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. I just saw the, the proposed calendar the same as, as you did in, in board docs. Dr. Martzloff, do you have any input on that?
I can share with you that two thousand twelve, the reorg meeting was held on July tenth, July ninth in two thousand thirteen, July ninth in two thousand fourteen, July first in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, July fifth in two thousand seventeen, July second in two thousand eighteen, July first, two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So it's been about half and half.
So there's no, no real reason as to why we had moved to the first day in July, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm guessing. Question?
I don't have a reason. Dr. McClary, I do see a hand up. Let me see if she has something to add.
I do remember reading and of course, right now, I can't remember the specifics, but I believe it's something that we as a district don't decide. It's part of the Erie County or state regulations that a reorg meeting is always the first Wednesday of the month, or July, or the second, whatever. But I believe the decision of when it is comes from outside of us. Obviously, not really good on the specifics, but.
Right, no, I understand. So we might want to double check that because that might be in violation of our policy that's in, in, in the district. Because I know I saw, I think that Mrs. Carey had provided a copy of that, that it said that within the first fifteen days of the month. But I was just curious as to why we weren't actually practicing that philosophy, at least for the five years I've been on the board.
Okay, so Mrs. Carey, did you have a hand up?
Just wanted to echo what Mr. Lemay mentioned. I found that policy and I noticed other districts were also following that policy sixteen-twenty, that it shall be held on the first Tuesday in July unless it's a holiday. So I just, that's why I attached that policy.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Luthervera, are we going to conduct the meeting now based on how we approved it last year? Or are we going to go back to the old format?
I, I don't know. That'll be up to the, will, will of the board. So whoever's president and whatever the board wants, that's what will happen.
Technically, you're president up until you're voted out. That's what we cleared through council last year. Your, your title doesn't relinquish on July first.
Correct. So can you restate your question? I guess I just didn't understand that.
Well, if you recall, last year, we, we had researched and made sure that we were in the right to conduct the reorg meeting as a regular meeting, which allowed for the exec staff, the president, vice president, to do an agenda planning session with the district, with the assistant, or excuse me, superintendent, as well as open the meeting up, which allowed for if we needed to necessitate an executive session prior to the meeting, we could go into executive session at six PM like we normally do. The old format did not allow for that, which allowed for what tends to be a very late evening.
Okay. Are you looking for some kind of answer now? Or can we decide that at our next meeting?
Well, technically, you'll have to kind of make that decision now because that, that dictates where you're going to go with the next meeting. My, my suggestion is go with the new format, but then, you know, it seems to be that we are technically in violation of our, our policy, but the policy is eleven years old. So we probably need to work on that in August, I would suggest, to amend the policy and update that to the new procedure.
But our meeting is June, I, I guess I'm not understanding how we'd be, we'd be in violation. If our meeting is July first and I remain president until June thirtieth, any agenda planning could happen before, correct?
Yes, it could. And, and your title is not relinquished on June thirtieth, is what I was saying. You are, you are the board president.
Until someone else is sworn in, right till we meet at the table. I see what you're saying.
Which means the July first meeting, you can actually open the meeting up, conduct the meeting up until the board election for officers, at which point, if you are not elected, then you would step down and relinquish to the new president.
I see what you're saying. Well, I, I would prefer there not to be an executive session before the meeting on July first. I would prefer to have Mrs. Carey open the meeting and start the meeting, have us run our elections for getting everybody sworn in and then run our elections for officers and continue that way. That would be my preference.
Okay, so then we should discuss this policy then at a future date.
I'm good with that. Thank you. I don't think this needs a formal motion since it's just a review right now. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, we are, we are on item F, still the president's report. Oh, wait, that's what we were just talking about, right? ECASB is exploring options for holding training sessions for members in the fall. They are looking at September twelfth and September twenty-sixth. I'm sure Mrs. Carey will reach out to those new members to get that information. The annual awards dinner, which is usually held in the spring, has been moved to October first. So please save that date if you are interested in attending the annual awards dinner. And I believe that's open to all board members. Does anyone have anything to add or discuss for Erie County Association of School Boards? Okay, seeing none. Item G is our New York State School Board Association. New York State law requires newly elected school, school board members to take mandatory training within their first year of service. This training requires topics on the essentials of school board governance and a minimum of six hours in fiscal oversight, accountability, and fiduciary responsibilities of a school board member. The district clerk will process registration for newly appointed board members. The two thousand twenty summer law conference is going to be held virtually July twenty-first and July twenty-second. There is a charge of one hundred thirty dollars for, per member. I have indicated that I would like to attend. Is there anyone else from the board that's interested in attending that event? Dr. McClary?
I just have a question.
Yep.
Is this the law conference, Mrs. Carey? Do you know that, um, the one that's usually in August with Mr. Jay Rona that comes and then we do the breakout sessions? Is this, because there's usually two different law conferences. And usually the, there's one in July and there's one in August. So maybe this is just the only one that will be offered virtually. If I, I just want to make certain that is, that's accurate, if you know.
I don't know, but I can find out right away. I can log onto their site.
Okay, so at this time, I've attended for four years in a row. I find it very beneficial, but I do believe I've, I'm receiving many webinars on the same topics through my own paid professional job. So I'm going to save the district money and I will make sure I keep abreast on all these situations on my own.
Mr. Mekka?
I don't think it is the, the same as the ECASB conference, law conference that's usually held in August. When I click on the link, it says legal considerations for the reopening of schools.
I think you might be right, Mr. Mekka. I, I think I vaguely remember there being a NISBA one and an ECASB one and that they're both held in the summer, if I'm remembering correctly. Also, I want to add that the annual NISBA convention is being planned to be held in New York City. So as of right now, it's still an actual live event. That event is scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-ninth through Saturday, October thirtieth. We don't need to choose who's attending that event yet. Obviously, we'll have new board members to swear in and we can put that back on our agenda for next month. But I just want to offer that, I have spoken with a board member in another district that what their board does, because the NISBA event can, can be sort of expensive to all, have us all travel, is they rotate who goes each year. Instead of sending the whole board, they, they, you know, are a little bit more conservative with the spending and they send two board members per year. And they rotate who those board members are so that everyone eventually gets an opportunity. Has there any thoughts on that at this point? Preliminary, it's still October, but I know Mrs. Carey will probably start registering people this summer. Mr. Mekka?
I, I find that most of the times that, you know, I've been on the board, I think this is my fifth year, I've found that not everyone is available to go. And I think it was really great when we had the opportunity to have a large number of people go at once a few years ago. I think it really helped with our collegiality and team building and relationship building. So I'm not really in agreement with the idea of limiting, limiting it to two people.
Thank you, Mr. Mekka. Mr. Lemay?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Mekka on this one. And it's not necessarily the same reasons. As an outsider in the school district, you know, I'm a business owner, I, I find these conferences extremely beneficial. I mean, I attend just about every single one that I can, whether it's webinars, going in person, going downtown, whatever, to try and get and acclimate myself and bring myself up to speed as much as I can to understand the issues, not just within the school district, but within, at the state level and where they are and what I can do as a board member to, to advocate for those issues and try and correct them and whatnot. And I think it's a disservice to not allow board members access to that kind of stuff, that training to, to help proficiate and, and make them better people and better, better trustees overall.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Okay, so let's just keep that in mind. We could think about it again. I'm sure it'll be on our agenda in the future for next month. Okay, item H is strategic planning update. I don't have anything to report there. Dr. Martzloff, did you have anything to add for strategic planning?
No, just that we're going to be looking to get it back underway in the fall, once again, open up so that people can come together. We probably have at least three more meetings that need to take place to bring our strategic plan together. And so we look forward to that happening, that's all our key components to developing our five-year plan.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Martzloff, would you please give your community update?
Thank you, Mrs. Luthervera. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Meyer and Dr. Venater for serving on the school board here in Williamsville for the last three years. Thank you for your service and for helping our school district move forward in a positive and productive and constructive way. I want to congratulate Dr. McClary on her reelection to the school board. Thank you, Dr. McClary, for running again. And you were the top vote getter. I'd also like to congratulate and recognize Christopher Casmaric Wagner and Michael Biscagli as our new board members. We look forward to welcoming them. We will have a board member orientation with them in the coming weeks with our leadership team to help them understand how things work as it relates to sharing of information and asking questions and things of that nature. So we look forward to that as well. Today in particular, I want to say thank you to Lynn Carey for her tremendous work organizing these years. Though what an effort. It's been unbelievable. So I heard they're going to do this again next year with absentee ballots. So we look forward to her topping on her performance this year, next year. It's highly democratic with over twelve thousand voters and a normal election year, we'd have three to five thousand people come to North High School vote. So we're glad to hear people's voices. I'd also like to thank Lori Kachmeti, my secretary, who was very helpful to win and organizing things and pulling things together for the vote. And all the members of the Erie County Board of Elections who assisted as well. So And all the members of the, uh, Erie County Board of Elections who assisted as well. So they all did a tremendous job. Uh, as I mentioned, we are again ranked the number one school district in Western New York by Business First. Uh, it's first time since 2014. Uh, so we are honored, uh, to be recognized in this fashion. Uh, but we also know it's a tremendous team effort that starts with our Board of Education supporting what we need to do as a school district to make ourselves, uh, the best that we can be. And we thank, of course, all of our administrators, uh, our teachers, our students, our parents, staff members, community members. It takes a team effort. And this is really a school community that values education at a very high level. So we're very fortunate to have that support, uh, which leads to, uh, this ranking. Uh, it has been a highly unusual, uh, school year. Um, I don't, can't recall any other time where we've been sort of, uh, working from home, uh, for months at a time. But I want to say thank you, uh, to all of you as school board members, all of our administrators, teachers, support staff, students, parents and community members. Um, you know, it's certainly been a big challenge, particularly doing all this online uh, without a great deal of lead time for training, professional development, uh, sharing of best ideas and organizations. So uh, I want to thank everyone who came together and did that. Our students have now concluded their school year. And, uh, we're really looking forward to planning over the summer. We think, uh, the great teamwork will continue. As you know, summer school is canceled, but there's going to be a tremendous amount of planning going on over the summer. We don't know if school will be physically, uh, in person or if it'll be online or a mixture or some sort of, uh, split schedule. Uh, we don't know that yet. So in preparation for that, we'll be doing a tremendous amount of planning and collaboration with everyone. We are preparing a survey, uh, for our parents that we'll be releasing uh, most likely, uh, in late June or early July. And, uh, we are planning with our teachers throughout this week as they are still, uh, working this week. We, uh, will continue the plan, not knowing exactly what the required needs will be. Uh, but we hope to also put together at least one committee. Uh, once we know some of the parameters around school, putting in September, what the expectations are so that people have input directly into what we're doing. And then lastly, I want to congratulate this year's seniors for graduating from our three high schools on June 27th. We look forward to seeing you across the stage. It's not, uh, the normal, uh, graduation that we do. Uh, but I hope you know the district did try, uh, its very best to make it as close to that as possible. So congratulations to all of our seniors and, uh, thank you everyone for your continued high level of support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members for Dr. Martslove? Mrs. Beeger?
Thank you. And Dr. Martslove, thank you so much for your community update. Uh, I always find that report really helpful and informative. I'm happy to hear that you'll be bringing some stakeholders together to help inform these really difficult decisions and that it's hard to do that now and we just don't know what the state is going to give us as far as our fence around the playground of what we can do. So, uh, really appreciate that and, and thank you so much for, for sharing where we are. Uh, I always feel that the community update is really helpful and right now we have looks like 17 attendees left on our, uh, meeting this evening. Uh, hopefully people watch the board meeting afterwards, but it's important, I think, that we continue to do a good job of updating our community beyond this board meeting before the next board meeting. Um, I think it's really important as parents and families and teachers and staff start to wonder what's going to happen. Um, there's feelings of anxiety around uncertainty uh, that we continue, uh, to share those plans that, uh, you've been referring to. There will be a lot of planning going on and, and where we end up, we just don't know yet. Um, because of that, I would like to make a motion to have Dr. Martslove provide a weekly update to our families as well as faculty and staff each week until we return to school in September. I believe by doing this, it will help to ensure our Williamsville community will stay informed with the facts regarding the planning and preparation for opening schools in the fall.
There's a motion on the table by Mrs. Beeger. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay? Seconded that motion. Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Mr. Meca?
Um, Mary, what form or format do you see this taking? Do you see it more like an email to, to parents or do you see it just kind of as an open letter available on the website?
That's a great question and I think, um, perhaps I'd leave that up to Dr. Martslove and how he sees, uh, it best to communicate out. I know parents may not be checking WITS mail as much. Um, so whether it be an email, I think email to faculty and staff is appropriate. Um, to families, I don't think it hurts to send out an email, um, to put it up on the website as well. So if people are looking for um, factual information, a lot of times someone says something and the telephone game happens and then uh, we've got rumors spinning out that are just untrue and it's a detriment to the work that's happening in the district. So um, I, I, I'm really open to that. I'm thinking possibly emails to, um, families and to teachers and then perhaps put those messages to the community on our district website as well.
Any other discussion?
I just mentioned one thing, um, and this is a little bit about the communication piece. Dr. Martslove, could we maybe, um, look into again, I know we did this early on with remote learning, that the WITS mails were not, we had those just kept within the WITS mail. They weren't going out to people's personal emails due to the amount of, um, teacher emails that were going to parents and students due to the situation of remote learning. Now that, that piece is over, could we maybe look at a district, uh, have the district look again at pushing out WITS mails to the personal email addresses? I have heard that from both my liaison schools, both KC and North, um, had asked because unless you really log into your WITS mail now, you do not receive those emails. And especially over the summer months, um, that I don't see a lot of people maybe logging into WITS mail. So if you're going to use that as the, your platform of maybe if you are going to communicate that way, that we look as a district at pushing back those emails out if that's a possibility.
Um, I, I would respond to that, Mrs. Vance, by saying that I would not recommend doing that. Um, these pickups and these holdups have happened for the last several years at least where different email providers are holding on to WITS mails and releasing them 20 at a time, 40 at a time, and you've got 20,000 going out. It might take, you know, a number of days for them to get to all of the people who are supposed to receive, uh, the WITS mails. I do think, uh, right now, we are looking at, uh, some possible alternative to WITS mail, whether it be through the Gmail system or on some other option, uh, that would work and be more robust and, and quicker. Uh, when you send a WITS mail, it would be good to be able to include that to all staff. Uh, so that everybody gets the same message instead of, okay, now you gotta pick the WITS mail, forward it to people, things of that nature. Uh, we need to have a more robust communication system when it comes to electronic sharing of information. And I know we're gonna work on that over the summer. I received a lot of questions, just like you just shared, Mrs. Vance, about can't you just connect it back to the email? Uh, we could, but as long as you're okay with not receiving emails for, you know, two days, three days, a week. I, I, you know, however long it takes to get to people, uh, is concerning. So, uh, we want to look at our system and we want to look at our process. And then we do want to make efforts to communicate more. And we plan to do that particularly going into next year.
Any other discussion on the motion? Yeah, Mrs. Beeger's motion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? They look like unanimous to me. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, Dr. Martslove, would you please lead us in a review of the district goals?
Yes, I just, uh, want to share, uh, there's a written report, it's pretty extensive on the goals that we've had this year. Um, there are goals that we achieved and there's also ones that are yet to be achieved. I mentioned a short while ago about strategic planning and have to recalibrate on that, on when exactly, uh, we can get back together. Uh, but that's one we think is very important to carry over to next year. And, uh, we're happy, uh, to answer any questions the board has on this year's, uh, goals and what was accomplished or, uh, perhaps not accomplished to the degree that, uh, we'd like.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions regarding district goals for this year? Mrs. Beeger?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if I'm muted or not. Am I am muted still?
You're good. We can hear you.
Sorry. I opened up the goals, uh, document and I lost my Zoom, so I'm not there. Sorry, everybody. Um, I first wanted to say about this district goal document, there's so much excellent work here. There are just so many examples of all the work that is happening in the district and I would encourage people um, to really go into board docs and look at this because a lot of questions or people are wondering what's happening in schools. There's so much work that's been going on even, um, through the spring months and it's really interesting to read here. So thank you to everyone who's involved in this um, piece of work. It's very helpful. Uh, I had just have a couple of quick questions. My first question, uh, is about reading and writing workshop. Uh, it mentions secondary implementation and I know that was started to roll out this year. I'm curious what the status of secondary implementation for reading, writing workshop will be for the 2021 school year.
Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bailey. I don't know if you'll be able to hear her that well. Dr. Bailey, you might need to move down to this side of the table. The microphones do not work. Nothing works other than the television, right?
I have a couple of questions if it's helpful. Not, not too many, but.
Can you hear?
Hi, I hope you can hear me.
Hi, I can hear you. I can't see you, but.
Sorry, I know. I apologize. Um, let me turn it over a little. Oh, I'm, I'm seeing, oh, there I am.
There you are.
Hello. So when you, uh, mentioned secondary implementation, are you, uh, mentioning the next stage of implementation or implementation at certain grade levels?
At certain grades into the middle schools.
So, um, as, as you know, and as you can see in the report, um, and actually in some of our updates before the closure occurred, um, it really is our plan to continue to move forward. Um, we were fortunate to be able to continue our efforts, uh, during the closure. We had actually quite a bit of professional development planned, um, through our lab school partnerships. Um, we worked closely with Teachers College to continue those partnerships. So I really feel like the rhythm that we had at the existing partnership schools, we were able to maintain just in a different kind of format given, uh, the closure. Um, during that time though, I, I do want to share that, uh, we had worked, uh, out with Teachers College that they would not just support the schools currently implementing, um, but all of our elementary schools, even the ones that did not have or do not have a current partnership. So we actually were able to expand the level of support there. Um, we did seek and, uh, they've recently shared with us that they are able to honor um, giving us some additional partnerships yet next year, which would actually include middle school because of their level of implementation. We've been working closely with the remainder of the middle school principals, um, and we're still watching the form of increasing, um, use of the reading and writing workshop model. So we do actually have some upcoming professional development in the summer, which will be virtual in nature. So you may recall that we had our summer institutes in person last year. These will now be virtual and there is a whole, whole middle school strand, um, for the teachers and our uh, plan is to have teachers engage in that training and then implement, um, certain units as they go into the fall. Uh, we're fully prepared, given some resources that we've not only developed here, but that we've gotten from Teachers College and we need an online study again. There is actually a, a system by which those lessons can be modified and adapted to meet the needs online. So we are, we are still planning to move forward. Um, it's just going to be dependent on what format we're in, but we'll see.
Makes sense. Thank you so much for that update. I appreciate it. My next question has to do with the goal around homework and grading and it was great to see that there's been a lot of work and discussion, work groups around that piece. One of the next steps that I noticed is that, um, stakeholder input would be included as part of the next steps. And I'm just curious how, um, that will take place going forward.
So we actually started the data collection process before the closure. Uh, we had worked first and foremost with, um, the principals to collect current practices at the building level and that involved direct conversations with teachers. Uh, so we do have some level of data already available to us. The next layer, uh, that we developed were surveys on homework uh, and homework practices. Only one was able to be released before the closure and we did not think it would be appropriate, given the circumstances around the closure to survey on homework. And given our circumstances, actually some of our perceptions have shifted, um, regarding our practices in all of these areas. So what we were able to do is bring the committee back together. As you can see, we had one whole group meeting and three breakout sessions. It was extremely productive. So part of our discussion there was, um, on research, but, uh, as we shared with the committee, there's still much gathering to do around, uh, some of the perceptions, not only internally in staff, but we'd like to also be able to harness some feedback from students and parents. So we see that as some next steps that we'd like to take next year.
Great. I look forward to hearing more about that as that continues and when we return to normal, whenever that may be. Um, that's great to hear. Uh, my last question has to do with the goal around social emotional learning and mindfulness. Um, so great to see the expanded implementation of this and, um, one of the pieces I thought was so strong, saying that next steps, um, are really reflective of our time and that we'll be seeing more emphasis on anxiety and trauma-informed care due to our current COVID-19, uh, situation. So thank you to the district for recognizing that now and, and starting to prepare and plan for that as kids return. Uh, my question is around the pilot program that's been taking place around restorative practices um, at Heim and Middle, I'm sorry, Heim and Mill Middle. I'm curious if that's going to continue, if that's going to expand to other schools or maybe that has expanded to other schools already and I just wasn't aware. So I'm curious where we are with our um, restorative practices in our schools.
Yeah, so that is, uh, that is gonna be part of my wellness presentation as a highlight. Uh, it, uh, we're in this year two, we've completed year two of the three-year pilot program. Uh, Lyndra Way is, is, is fulfilling that obligation and it is, um, extending out in other buildings. So, um, we're seeing it, uh, become a real positive movement throughout the district. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll address it in my highlights, uh, my presentation, uh, which is upcoming.
Fantastic. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from board members regarding the board goals or the, sorry, the district goals? Mr. Lemay?
Not specific to the district goals, but, uh, we had a retreat a year ago, uh, this past spring, um, where we were talking about, uh, the board and the district working together to build goals and we were talking about taking this year to work on that. I know some of the things that came out of that was, uh, uh, you know, that we shouldn't have more than probably three or four main goals and never more than three or four sub-goals and that sort of stuff. But I just wanted to know what, what's the status? Where are we at that as a, as a board and as a district and, and what's the plan? And I mean, it's been a year, so how are we moving forward with this going into the future?
Mr. Lemay, who are you directing your question to?
Whoever has the answer.
Um, I can tell you that there's nothing scheduled for us to, uh, collab, consolidate goals. I, I personally see a benefit to there being separate goals for the work of the board.
I don't, I don't think it was consolidating of goals. I think it was working together with the goals to build, come, combined goals, you know, the goals of the board then trickle down to the goals of the district, et cetera, et cetera.
Does anyone from the board have a response for Mr. Lemay? Dr. Martslove, do you wish to comment?
Yeah, I think if you ask the NISBA facilitator that we've had for the last several streets, I think they would give you, uh, some thoughts on this not being a good idea. And the reason being is district goals are things the district is looking to accomplish and do and provide for students. And board goals are things that the board is gonna accomplish and do itself as a board. For instance, you know, attend more, uh, school visits, have community forums, uh, listen to the community when it comes to budget cuts, things of that nature that the board is actively involved in, that maybe the district is more focused on trying to do on a daily basis, uh, what we need to do to help, uh, students. So I'm not sure they quite go together in that regard, but I'm open to it if that's something. So I'm not sure they quite go together in that regard, but I'm open to it if that's something the board wishes to pursue.
Mrs. Van Seis.
So I also see that they remain separate. I think we were being advised that we should look at the district goals, and maybe shape and form some of our goals based on that. Example, student achievement. So we know the district goals, and then our board has a goal in there regarding student achievement, such as making sure that we're updated on graduation rates, summer school, you know, the attendance there, as well as graduation rates there, looking at our different programs, mindfulness, the health and wellness. So making sure that we're overseeing, that we're receiving presentations, reports, all of those things that then align and support the district goals is the way I see that meshing together. They should remain separately, because we, as a board, are overseeing, and want to make sure that our role is, of course, separate than what we're having the district carry out.
Mrs. Van Seis, I reviewed my notes from that retreat here a couple of weeks ago, wow, a week ago. And it was more of a collaboration of the district and the board, not one way or the other. But the way we're doing it right now is not what I, at least not what I wrote down, or the notes, and the slides and stuff like that that I reviewed. It's okay, it's the will of the board, or whatnot. I just, it's been a year, and we said we were going to take a year to make this change, and I don't see any change that's come forth in the past year. So that's why I'm bringing it up now to point it out. And if the point of that retreat is that we don't want to take any of the information from that forward, then that's fine, and that's the will of the board, so.
I'm not hearing it that way specifically. I know it was two years ago that we did that retreat on board goals and district goals, and we invited the assistant superintendents to join us during that retreat. And what I recall was that this year, when the district brought out its district goals, they were much more specific and responsive to the questions and concerns that we brought forth as board members throughout the year, which obviously came from our community and our parents. So I do feel that the, when we approve the district goals, and we take that action as a board to approve the district goals at the start of the year, that, to me, is our opportunity to make sure that we are agreeing with the goals that are being set. We have opportunities all year long to give input and to drive discussion. We have opportunities to direct the superintendent, who then directs his leadership team. So like, one example of that that comes to mind would be the technology goal of really examining the one-to-one device program. So a few years back, several board members, myself included, you know, raised this issue several times over at board meetings about questions or concerns of one-to-one devices, just not knowing whether it was the most appropriate thing. And so then the board, or the district, rather, decided to go ahead and make that a focus, and put that as one of its goals. And so I saw work regarding that under the technology goals. So I do believe that there is evidence of collaboration. And ultimately, we, as a board, are responsible, because we approve that work. So if we don't agree with what's being proposed to us, we need to give input when it's proposed, or input before the work is done to create that plan, when we go to vote on it. That's just my take on it. I definitely, I don't think it's a fair assessment to say that our board goals retreat that we held was for nothing. I think it was very beneficial, and we got a lot out of it. I think what I found too, was that when we form our board goals, it's not to micromanage the district, and it's not to take credit for the work that the district employees are doing, but rather, it's for us to make decisions about what we, as board members, are going to be ultimately responsible for. Whether that's monitoring things at the table, or whether that's attending events, community forums, liaison assignments, and that type of thing. That's my interpretation of it. I understand we might have different views on that. Any other thoughts on that? All right, I'm going to go on to item C. We're moving on to our policies. Would someone like to make a motion to take from the table the following revised policies? Fifty-six eighty-one, student safety plans. Sixty-two fourteen, probation and tenures. Seventy-two forty, student records, access and challenge. And seventy-five eleven, immunization of students. This is to take it from the table. Dr. McClary, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously. And now we will vote on those same policies. Would someone like to make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the revised policies? Fifty-eight, fifty-six eighty-one, excuse me. Sixty-two fourteen, seventy-two forty, and seventy-five eleven. Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Mertzloff, second. Is there any discussion on those policies? This is for second reading and adoption. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. And if it's all right with the board, I just want to go back to that district goals report, because I actually had a question about one of the goals, and I got a little sidetracked. Regarding the technology goals, there was a goal related to looking at how our tech integrators are being used, and getting recommendations from BOCs. And I saw in that report that BOCs was chosen to give the recommendation to the district regarding the use of our tech integrators. But that that work was interrupted during, due to COVID. So I just wanted to get an update on where, what our next steps are for that.
I spoke with Erie One BOCs about two weeks ago, and they informed me that they will be providing the district a draft report toward the end of July. And once we had that report, we will review it with our technology team and Dr. Mertzloff. And then we will move forward with that in the next school year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mertzloff. I'm really interested in finding out what their recommendations are. Right, moving on to item twelve D. Dr. Mertzloff, would you like to give the Wellness Council report, please?
Yes. We're very excited, once again, all the great things we have going on in regards to wellness across the district. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Skanzuzo, who's going to share a little bit more information on his specific standpoint with the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzloff. Our team of wellness, district wellness facilitators, Dr. Rosa Devati, our coordinator of Student Services, and I wish to express our appreciation to the Board of Education and the entire school community for sustained recognition of the importance of wellness programming and asset development efforts. We're grateful for your longstanding commitment to the mental health, social and emotional wellbeing, and resilience of students in our district. Our district-wide wellness programming for the nineteen-twenty school year includes, included many opportunities for professional development in the areas of asset development, social emotional learning, mindfulness practices, resiliency, and effective coping strategies, school connectedness, relationship building, as well as prevention of maladaptive risk-taking behaviors. These include collaborative for social emotional learning, or CASL, identifying five core competencies necessary for a successful and productive life, which include self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. Mindfulness training is about to include instruction in the social emotional framework, both the impact on positive youth behavior and achievement in the relationship of mindful practices. Restorative practices utilizing community circles continue to be introduced to staff as a social emotional learning practice, and infused as part of the mindfulness training and academic instruction. Restorative practices have been infused for the second year of a three-year pilot program at Heim Middle School and Mill Middle School, led by Lyndra Way, and has been positive and grown outside of the original two schools. Mindfulness and community circles are foundational in supporting a robust and vibrant social emotional learning platform, addressing specific skills, and creates classroom culture of mutual support and caring. I'd like to add that we've been committed to educating students, staff, and parents about anxiety. Kimberly Morrow, a licensed social worker and national presenter on anxiety, has provided professional development to district staff, serviced, has served as a consultant to mental health staff working with specific student issues, and has provided a webinar to parents on dealing with anxiety during the COVID-19 epidemic. We plan to continue our relationship with Ms. Morrow to further support students, staff, and parents around dealing effectively with the issue of anxiety. The district remains committed to sources of strength. The University of Rochester supported program that continues to train and develop peer leaders at all three high schools to develop positive, strength-based messaging in presentations and health classes to break the code of silence, and increase awareness and facilitate help-seeking behaviors to reduce the acceptability of suicide as a response to distress, seek help, and improve communication among our youth. Partnership with the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Erie County has provided ongoing training opportunities to our building mental health staff. We've certified twenty-eight staff members from each of our buildings, including AIM, in October, to deliver one hour in service to their building and faculty staff throughout large, throughout large group or small group sessions. Our district schools and support staff have been, have been provided this training to enhance their understanding of suicide prevention, which provides basic awareness of warning signs, the role of faculty and staff in the referral process, and the importance of protective factors. In the area of cultural diversity, inclusive education setting, and anti-bias education, we've had the Williamsville Central School District sophomores and juniors participate in the Challenge to Change Summit in the fall at Damon College. The goal is to create a community of thoughtful student leaders who can tackle difficult societal issues in a meaningful and positive way. Collaborative efforts between local school districts, UB School of Social Work, and the town of Amherst have supported the Challenge Change Movement to build unity and racial understanding in our community. Following the summit, the students were asked to identify specific goals for their schools and develop a plan of action for their building and community. An initiative that needs to be strengthened and broadened as we strive to support student leaders, participants in this important and necessary conversation is needed now more than ever. The implementation of the K-12 Comprehensive School Counseling Program Plan, which is posted on our district website, provides a strong starting point for the social emotional programming in our building, whether it's delivered face-to-face or on an online platform. The plan delineates and directs instruction, and direct instruction students receive in thirty-five skill areas, six which are listed as mindful skills, twenty-nine are considered behavioral skills, differentiated across three domains, academic, career, and social emotional. In total, these hundred-and-five skill areas require direct instruction for all students, and will be addressed several times throughout a student's K-12 experience. This plan is being utilized by school buildings as an integral part of their programming support, supporting the mental health of students. At this time, I ask you to please enjoy the following video, capturing images of the wellness initiatives that were supported this year at each school building, beginning with our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Specifics regarding these individual initiatives are too long to list in this presentation, but are included in this report. Our high school health teacher and wellness facilitator in the building, and Dr. Rosa Devati, our coordinator for Student Services, reported this video compilation together. Our kids are truly amazing, and even in an abbreviated school year, you could see the many efforts that were taking place that fell under the wellness initiative in their buildings. We continue to recommend goal-setting at all levels that utilize a combination of the six aspects and the asset-building model that were, that was implemented this past school year. Our focus upon student wellness, resiliency, and social emotional development across a wider school community is critical to unified efforts to promote healthy lifestyle choices in educating the whole child. Thank you. At this time, Dr. Devati and myself will be happy to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Skanzuzo and Dr. Devati, for all of your work in this area. I see a few hands up. I'll start with Mr. Mertzloff.
Thanks for the very thorough report, and I really appreciate the video. It was really nice to get to see everybody in their wellness efforts at the various schools, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Beeger.
I want to echo Mr. Mertzloff's thanks, and to all those people and all the schools, all the faculty and staff that are working with kids and this initiative. This report was beautiful, and it shows just the small things that become really large things, and I think very meaningful to our students. I'm so grateful for this work, and it was really nice to see this firsthand through video. So thank you for sharing that for us, too. I think it's something that our community should see and be proud of as well. It's a really wonderful thing for our kids to have. And I just want to mention that, you know, these pictures were all in school. For the last three months, I have a child at each level, elementary, middle, and high. And the echo of the wellness that I saw remotely from social workers sending different tools weekly, some really nice resources for parents, guidance counselors calling just to check up on kids. And I'm fortunate enough to have a student at Heim Middle who I understand must be involved in the restorative practices, because in one of his Zooms, I said, "What'd you guys do?" And he said, "Oh, it was great, we did a community circle." And he really enjoyed it, and that's just part of his language and what they do. And I could hear him talking away in the room, and I think those things are so effective and important for our kids to feel like they belong. So to everyone involved in this work, and Mr. Skanzuzo, thank you so much for this effort. Love to see these pieces continue to grow within our schools. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Beeger. Mrs. Van Seis.
I would just like to echo that. I think a huge takeaway that, sorry, that Williamsville District emphasizes is the piece of character education, which is beyond valuable. I see it just, you know, integrated through every lesson within the school buildings at each level, and it's absolutely outstanding. Our children are resilient, our children are accepting, their learning tolerance, all of these life skills that they will need once they transition out of high school. And I have to thank the district for all of the efforts. None of us were expecting this, and it has been difficult. But the connections that the teachers have made through things such as car parades, and all of those different things, teachers coming to each student's house just to bring them a token, whatever it was, to connect with them, it was absolutely priceless. So I'm going to try not to cry, because I have an eighth grader and a senior. But I have to say, I'm extremely proud of this district, and I think it's been a hardship for all. But the character education, I think it'll knock it out of the park. So thank you for that video. It was the best thing that we could leave tonight's board meeting with. I appreciate it.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. And I just want to encourage our parents to please make sure your child takes advantage of a club or one of our umpteen million opportunities that we offer, because that social emotional piece, and that feeling of, feeling that you belong to your school, and that you have a relationship, that it's part of your identity, whether you're one north, or whatever you are, you know, whichever district or feeder school you're following, just that feeling of belonging, it's very empowering, and it brings a lot of peace. We've seen so much about grief during this COVID pandemic, and the increased likelihood of anxiety and trauma. And I know you're actively preparing for that, for when our students are able to return. But as a mom, what I saw was that the clubs continued. And yes, they continued on Zoom, but they still happened, and those were the highlights. And those were the highlights of my kids' days, when they could still meet for art club or meet for environmental club. And it was, yes, they were learning and doing some activity regarding whatever the purpose of that club was, but just that camaraderie and that feeling of belonging, it was so evident. And it was really something that I think for children who were a part of something, they had that as their go-to then when the building had to physically shut down. So, if I can make one recommendation to parents, it's require your kid to join something, whether it's the music program, the arts, the visual arts, the sports, or one of the many, many clubs, because not all districts are able to offer all of the clubs that we offer, all of the extracurriculars. So, that would really be my recommendation to our families and our stakeholders. And thank you so much again for all of the work. I echo what my colleagues here have said. It was very evident to me. Throughout the year, we always see it, but even more so with COVID. Everything that Miss Van Sij said, the calls, you know, the little Zooms just to check up and get together. Sometimes they had Zooms just to play a game. But it was just to get together and talk to say, "Hey, how are you doing? I see you. I see you. How are you feeling? I hear you, and I'm here with you," although maybe not physically. And that's what we all need, right? Well, it doesn't matter if we're kindergarten to grade 12. We need it as adults up until the very young. We need to know that we belong and are a part of something greater than ourselves. So, thank you for all of that work.
You're very welcome. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Debate, who's joined us this evening, for all of her work. She is a driving force when it comes to initiatives and bringing people together for the good of our children and their mental health and their mental well-being and their overall well-being, I should say. She's a tremendous asset. I rely on her heavily, and I want to thank her. And if there's anything she'd like to say, I give her this opportunity as well because, you know, our wellness program isn't where it is without Dr. Debate.
Well, I appreciate that, and I would just like to thank you, Tony, for your leadership and, of course, the district board and superintendent and our other assistant superintendents, because we do this work together, and we do it integratively, that it's infused in everything we do. It is taking care of each other and connecting. So, thank you for that. And so, thank you for your support because we couldn't do it without you, because we know it matters to you, but it matters to the kids more, but we know that it matters. And so, we have the opportunity to do things that are very positive and effective for our students and families. So.
Great.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to our next item, which is the review of our Code of Conduct. Is there a motion, please, to accept and adopt the revised Code of Conduct as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Item 14. Is there a motion, please, to approve the reserve funding authority as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Sij, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. 14B. Is there a motion, please, to approve the resolution to authorize the district to issue revenue anticipation notes and tax anticipation notes as presented? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Item C. Is there a motion, please, to approve the Erie One Boses installment purchase agreement as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Any discussion? Mr. Lemay.
I just had a question. Since we've, with the remote learning here, we've discovered that Chromebooks seem to be vastly underpowered to be able to help with remote meetings and stuff like that. Are these new Chromebooks that we're going to be bringing in going to be made sure to at least hit some sort of a minimum specification in case we do have to go remote learning in the fall? That they'll be able to do that and be able to do video conference calls and that sort of stuff with students and teachers?
Yeah, all these Chromebooks will have the necessary cameras included on them. So, we believe that they should meet those requirements.
Okay. Is it possible we can ask Boses just to be sure on that? Because I know the existing Chromebooks have cameras on them as well, but they're, as we learned, underpowered. When you turn the video camera on, they just bog down and become unusable, as we've seen even with some board members and whatnot here that have tried to use the district Chromebook. So, I just want to make sure that we're making sure that we're preparing for this and just in case come the fall again.
We can certainly verify that information.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Item 15A. Does anyone have something they wish to share related to their liaison assignment? Board assignments conclude at the end of this month, and we will aim to make assignments for next year at our July 1st meeting. However, we usually have a little bit more time to do so when our district vote is in May. So, it may be necessary to approve assignments in either in July or August. If we're not able to get them all figured out by July 1st, we will get them worked out by August, just making sure that we fill all those spots. Item 16. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none. There are no items to discuss for curriculum. Item 18, 18A. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the funding for the negotiated agreement between the superintendent and the non-affiliated staff members as presented? Sorry, I'm getting out of myself. Mr. Mecca, thank you. Mrs. Beeger, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. 18B. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for summer hiring as presented? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Mrs. Van Sij, second. Any discussion on summer hiring? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. 18C. Is there a motion to approve the summer school resolution as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Any second? Mrs. Beeger, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. And where am I? Right, 19A. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for authority to approve change orders as presented? Thank you, Dr. McClary. Mr. Lemay is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. 19B. Dr. Martzlov, would you like to give us an update on the music project facility?
Yeah, I just want to share with the Board of Education that construction is moving ahead. We are constructing some of these additions you might notice at North High School. There are some walls in East Crane. I recently tweeted out about it yesterday, and we're excited that the project is moving along very well, and we look forward to completing it as soon as feasible. Mr. Matursky, anything you want to add or to plan?
Thank you. I just have a question about that. I did see the big wall at North. It's very exciting. For the graduations that are going to be happening on the field, I noticed that it's a little bit of an obstacle course now, like driving through the parking lots to get back towards the turf. Is there going to be something in place so that there's parking available those days? Are we asking some of the workers to move some of their equipment, or what's going on there?
I think number one, it's a Saturday. Number two is, I believe, Mr. Thomas at North, for example, provided a map so that people know where to park, where to enter, where parents go, where graduates go. It's pretty clear, so that there should be a good flow of individuals during that time.
Awesome. Thank you. I don't have a senior, so I didn't look closely at that information, but I appreciate that. Any questions from the board regarding the facility update? Okay, thank you. 19C. Is there a motion to approve the repair reserve bids as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mrs. Beeger, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the music project change order as presented? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. There are no items to discuss for item 20. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under committee of the whole? Mr. Lemay.
I actually have two. One, I wanted to get the ball rolling for consideration. I'm not sure what would be required from the district's point of view, but once we do go back into having onsite board meetings in person, I'd like us to find a way that we could continue either with this webinar format or some way to livestream our board meetings. I think we've seen that we tend to get a lot of people that are interactive that may not, especially in the beginning, be so gung-ho to come to a public board meeting. Maybe it's concerns or whatever. So, I'd like to see what it would take, if that would be financial investment or something like that that we would have to do to allow to maintain this somewhat format, again, whether webinar or just livestream or something along those lines. Would be nice that it would be able to integrate with our existing camera system there in Board Office so that we can, you know, have the cameras zoom in on people and that sort of stuff. And my second thing that I wanted to mention was I just wanted to take, you know, 10 seconds here and thank Dr. Venator and Mr. Meyer for their service on the board here because this will effectively be their last meeting. And you will be, you both have brought a differing opinion, and sometimes we've agreed, sometimes we haven't, but I think it's definitely brought a different point of view. And for sure, I'm going to miss that from both of you on the board here. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Anyone else? Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, first off, Mr. Lemay, thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that. And we definitely haven't agreed all the time, but you're a good man, a good character, and I appreciate you. Moving on to my commentary for this part of our agenda, this is a question for administration and Dr. Martzlov. Just kind of sitting back and reflecting on national events, the Black Lives Matter movement, and public awareness on the importance of diversity. And we even had some commentary during public commentary in the first part of our meeting tonight. I'm curious to know what our district currently does in the way of diversity training of both staff, teachers, administrators, and the like. I was hoping you could please comment on that for us tonight.
Well, I'm not really prepared to comment on it tonight, Mr. Meyer. I think some of the discussion via email was that the district administration would put together a report for the Board of Education for the upcoming school year so that we could fully investigate and look at the different ways that we do do this and report out to the board in full and make recommendations for what we need to do for the future.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I hope I get a chance to see that report. And then, just for whatever it's worth, you know, and again, I'm not going to be here on this board moving forward, but I think diversity is important. And I personally would like to see diversity training, not just for administrators, but teachers, staff, and board members, because I think when you have that kind of moment of reflection, it opens your mind, and empathy is always a good thing. And I think we need more of that in our, not just our district, but as a society as a whole. So, I would definitely promote that, and I urge the district to advocate for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Mecca?
Thanks. Kind of want to touch on some things that people have mentioned already. Mr. Lemay, I really love the idea of trying to be more inclusive through the use of technology and possibly opening up an easier venue for people to view our transparent board meetings. So, I think that's a great idea, kind of in line with what Mr. Lemay said. I'm a copier of Mr. Lemay all night, I guess. I'd like to also thank Dr. Venator and Mr. Meyer for their service on the board. It's been nice to work with you guys and wish you well. On the topic of diversity that was brought up by Dr. Ran Chandaretti, sorry if I blushed his name up. I would just like to give a heads up that at the next board meeting, not the Riordan meeting, our next full board meeting after that, I'd like to put a proposal before the board to consider forming a committee to bring in diverse voices into our decision-making processes. That may include having recruiting diverse voices for committees in the district, and also maybe the possibility of bringing on a student board member who's a non-voting board member. So, just kind of a heads up about that. I might like to form a committee to study that, and I may ask for the board's permission once the new board is seated and we move forward with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item 22.
Mrs. Otherver?
I'm sorry, Miss Van Sij. Go ahead.
Just hearing that, Mr. Mecca, I understand. But perhaps what we need to do is, maybe the district, what we first want to do is see what committees we already have in place and see who's part of those committees already. So, before we go ahead and form a committee that's going to promote diversity, to see if we can get diversity onto a committee, I would love to see already as a district, what committees we already have with our diverse, like people that are diverse already representing. One thing that comes to mind, strategic planning. I know we have a very diverse group, so perhaps we can first start there to see what we already have in place, and then that would give us foundation of where to go, what to build on, instead of going kind of the opposite way, if that makes sense.
Mr. Mecca, I'm going to have you give final thoughts. I'm going to move on to the next item.
Thanks. I just want to respond. Thank you, Mrs. Van Sij. I think that's a good idea. And Dr. Martzlov alluded to the possibility of us hearing a report on the general issue. So, I think waiting on that would make a lot of sense. So, thanks for your guidance on that and leadership.
Thank you. Item 22 is correspondence. Is there any correspondence that anyone wants to discuss? I just want to share that we did get a letter from Mr. Ramchan Reddy, and he was requesting that we consider adding three non-voting members of the school district to our school board that would be able to give input. I just want to share with the community that I first consulted my school law book, and then I also checked with our board attorney. And under the law in New York State, we as a board do not have the authority to add members to our board, whether they are voting or non-voting. There is an option for a student, but there's a whole process, and there's a lot of information in the school law book. So, if you So if you are a board member and have that, that school law book that we're entitled to get each year, please reference that because there is a lot of information, especially pertaining to adding a student member. And it speaks about if your district already has some type of, like if your district has multiple high schools and has an interhigh council already, there's wording in the law about that, which we as a district do have. We clearly have three high schools. We have an interhigh council. We have a board member, Dr. McClary, who is the liaison to that council or to the interhigh council, and she attends those meetings and sends us back reports that it's our responsibility to look at as board members and give feedback back and forth. So I just want to offer that. I want to thank Mr. Ramchan Ruddy for his letter. I certainly do understand his concern. Clearly, we are all a bunch of white people. We can all see that, right? None of us are blind to that. But I want, I agree with the request to have the district put together a report for the work that is being done, because we approve the professional development plan every year. We approve the wellness plan every year. There is a considerable amount of evidence for work that is ongoing. I believe as a white female, me speaking personally, it's my role right now to do less talking and be more open and listening to what's going on in the world. And I absolutely invite feedback from all diverse groups and believe Black Lives Matter as do all lives matter. And that's me speaking as an individual. So I just want to make sure the community is aware that we did look into that request with our attorney, but it is not within our authority to bring three extra board members to the table without, you know, we have to keep with the law. So wait, I did, I did consult on that. Is there any other correspondence that anyone wishes to share?
I think Dr. Martzlove would like to chime in, Teresa.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Martzlove. Thank you, Phil.
This is Letterbird. I agree with what you're saying. I would just ask if, I know you respond to all the community members who speak at our board meetings. If you could please let him know that the board or superintendent or district administration does not have the authority to put members on the board in non-voting capacity. I think he's under the impression from other conversations he's had with other individuals in the district that we have somehow held this back and kept this from happening. And I just want to make sure he's clear that that is not the case.
Thank you. I will certainly do that. And what comes to mind too, Dr. Martzlove, is when you have your superintendent community council. And one of the things I've been able to observe over time, over the years, is that that group in itself is becoming much more diverse each year, which I think is very important to have members of our community that are coming together to join with our superintendent look like our students and represent all of our students, right? So I do believe we have done a tremendous amount of work. I think there's always, always more work to be done. So I will certainly make sure that if I'm contacted again by this individual, I will, I will share that we, that we don't have legal authority to do what he is requesting. All right. In terms of other correspondence, we did receive 18 letters regarding graduation from parents. I think we have about 800 or so graduates. I wish everybody a fantastic graduation. And I'm looking forward to giving my address to our South students. All right. Any other correspondence? All right, we will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board may electronically raise their hand at this time. We can all sort of look at that together to see if a hand goes up. That would be helpful. We have 14 attendees still on right now. Is there anyone out there in webinar land that would like to speak? If so, just raise your little emoji hand. Going once, going twice. All right, moving on. An additional executive session is not needed tonight. Therefore, our next scheduled board meeting will be the organizational meeting on July 1st. Congratulations to all of our students and families. I am sending love and congratulations to all of our seniors. Class of 2020, I know you will make us proud and give back in a positive way. To all our students returning in September, please have a safe summer. Keep reading, keep learning, keep growing. And we look forward to welcoming you back in September. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Stay safe and be well.